Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. We're delighted to have everyone this evening. This evening's agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room for you. There will be two opportunities this evening to address the board. The first being Agenda 86.1, the first set of public comments is related to Agenda 87.1. For 11.3, please state the agenda and your representation at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda 12.1. There is an assignment sheet located on the table in the back of the room, and each speaker will have five minutes to address the board and a timer will be shed on the screen. With that in mind, we begin the panel.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here. Will you please join us in the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of the United States, where the nation may live, with liberty and justice for all. We do not have any district highlights or recommendations this evening, so I'm going to pass it over 4.1 to the superintendents, because we'll be holding it to Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mrs. Davidson, members of the board. I just have a couple of updates from the leadership team and things that they've put together. First, I want to say that all schools will open tomorrow. I know Carrie and Scotty have been working on that around the clock for a while. So, all of our buildings will be open. Transportation, we have some longer days. We are fully staffed to start the year. It's been a while since we've been able to say that. So, all 99 bus routes have been assigned a permanent driver. All 20 my van routes have an assigned permanent driver. We have eight substitutes and seven individuals in the onboarding process. So, we're very excited about that. The signed Ohio Budget Bill includes a provision for the state to cover the cost of reduced-priced breakfast and lunch. Students qualified as reduced-priced eligible will receive meals at no cost. At the end of the 22-23 school year, we had 986 students who received that benefit. So, we have a lot of families that own that benefit. Our annual back-to-school website, which releases supply list and other work information regarding the start of school year, was available when distributed to families about a week earlier than what we've been able to do in the years past. And on the HR side, I know there were some questions. Our HR folks have added 40, or hired 47 classified positions, 71 licensed, and seven administrators. That's not all new to this replacement. But the number of staff that have changed buildings or assignments this year on the license side of 304. So, there's been a lot going on in addition to the facilities. It was great seeing everybody over the past couple of weeks. We were able to leave all of our groups. That was great, seeing everybody come back and get to talk to people and just relax a little bit. And then, the last thing I have is I'd like to thank the city of Westerville and the city of Manhur, Monica Island, for their continued support of Westerville schools and the assistance that they've provided and helped us to get all of our buildings so that all of our students can come back to school tomorrow. I've had some conversations with Monica. We've exchanged some messages, and I know that there was some false information out there in terms of what the city may or may not be doing. But according to our folks, Scotty Donan and Carrie Dennis, the city went not only above and beyond, but above and beyond what we were even coming from last year. So, I just want to thank the city for their support and partnership.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to board meeting minutes. We're going to take these one at a time because someone wasn't able to attend all of these meetings. So, 5.1, approve the minutes for the regular Board of Education meeting held Friday, July 7, 2023. Ask consent, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 5.2, approve the minutes of the Special Board of Education meeting held on Wednesday, July 7, 2023. Ask consent, may I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Any questions or comments here? Hearing none.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Epstein.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 5.3, approve the minutes of the Special Board of Education meeting held on Thursday, July 27, 2023. Ask consent, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 5.4, approve the minutes of the Special Board of Education meeting held on Tuesday, August 1, 2023. Ask consent, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Epstein.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 5.5, approve the minutes of the Special Board of Education meeting held on Wednesday, August 2, 2023. Ask consent, may I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Epstein.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 5.6, approve the minutes of the Special Board of Education meeting held on Thursday, August 3, 2023. Ask consent, may I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. So moved.
Any questions or comments here? Hearing none.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Epstein.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 5.7, approve the minutes of the Special Board of Education meeting held on Friday, August 1, 2023. Ask consent, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
5.8, approve the minutes of the Special Board of Education meeting held on Friday, August 11, 2023. Ask consent, may I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Epstein.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Moving on to other comments. We do not have any other comments this evening, which takes us to final close. 7.1, board member compensation, may I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Nicole, do you want to make some remarks? Or do you have a deal? Okay.
So, we have two board seats up this fall, which means we'll have two board members whose terms will start on January 1st. So, the current board has to get the compensation for those board seats that start January 1, 2024. And in board leadership, we will discuss setting the rate at $125.
Couple of other things we talked about, which I think is important for people to know is, you know, sometimes... I think sometimes the time away from your families and the cost that this takes to be part of the Board of Education or any public office is hard on families. So, one of the reasons that we chose to do this, or we're putting it up here and hopefully the board will support it, is to help other people if they would want to run for the Board of Education, maybe provide childcare or whatever needs there are out there. So, that was the thought I did.
It's important enough that this only affects the incoming board members. It doesn't affect those who are already in.
Yes, right.
I think it's also important to add to the conversation that really what this does is it brings board compensation in ways that is in alignment with what compensation looks like for a number of surrounding districts as well.
And currently, we receive $80 each meeting. It doesn't mean every time we snow it somewhere, we were paid for that. It's only going to be used, so just... Yep, board members just need to be educated on that.
And my Dr. Nesterbaker said this will only affect the members whose terms start January 1, 2024.
And we don't know who did this from.
Right, fair.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Epstein.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 7.2, a resolution to approve purchases in accordance with the laws in 5705-411 and Board Policy 6320, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, President Davidson, members of the board. So, these are then a non-purchase order. So, this is the case where we had a purchase order that was opened after the employment date or when goods or services were ordered. So, we have several on here that are referencing prior to those. So, those were just a situation where we had a period of the over-primed pre-mature. And then, we have a few that were just the period wasn't opened timely or it wasn't written for not to cover as a full purchase. So, we will need your approval, consulting, and court side.
Any other questions? Hearing none.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Up next, the personnel consent agenda. I need to call out 8.14, does anyone else need to board anything up? Okay, so for the personnel, we have a move for 8.1 through 8.13 and 8.15 and 8.71.
So moved.
Welcome.
Good evening, President Davidson, Vice President Meyer, members of the board, Ms. Marshall, and Mr. Hershizer. This evening's personnel consent agenda includes action with regard to retirements, resignations, leaves of absence, contract status changes, changes of assignment, on-time Ks, and employment decisions. I think that extra page in the agenda is because of us this morning. I do want to call out a special thank you to our retirees on this agenda. Rhonda Hoffman for 20 years of service to the district. Linda Neal for 15 years of service. Stephen Sheetz, 16 years of service to the district, and Jill Ledford, 35 years of service. We're very appreciative for all of the work these four have done for our students and our community. Additionally, we are seeking your approval of MOUs with the OC 138 and 719, both of which address substitute custodian support. Additionally, we are requesting your approval of two MOAs with our WBA regarding teacher coverage for cafeteria recess aids, crossing guards, extended custody, and instructional aids. So, just appreciate everybody's support from all of these needs with the extra work that they put in through the year. Finally, the consent agenda includes employment decisions with regard to our new superintendent, Dr. Joe Clark, and his transition into the district. Dr. Clark, it's an honor to welcome you to Westerville City Schools. At this time, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
No questions that we're super excited to have here, gentlemen. Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. May I have a motion for 8.14, employment's up until your license to be half, August 14, 2023?
So moved.
So moved.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Epstein, because my daughter Kay is available for checks out. Moving on, we do not have any other business this evening, which takes us to more comments. 10.14, first reading, policy 2114, meaning state performance indicators.
Thank you. Thank you, President Davidson, Vice President Meyer, Mr. Hershizer, Ms. Marshall, and members of the board. Before you, for your consideration, is policy language change for policy 2114, meaning state performance indicators. The change in the language updates our policy to align with the changes that have been made in the state report card accountability measures. If you recall, the previous report card had an A through F measure and ratings such as an excellent school and things like that. So, the language replaces the A through F with the five stars that we now currently have and eliminates the excellent school rating. We also have language in there that solidifies and continues our expectation to be and achieve the highest rating that they have. So, recommendation for the board to consider that for a second rating.
Any questions? Thank you. 10.2, first reading, policy 8390, animals on district property.
Yes, so again, just like the report card, 8390 animals on district property, the changes in our policy reflects updated language and the code of federal regulations for animals on school property. This particular policy has not been updated since 2015 and reflects that CFR language and reflects the language that reflects current practices with animals that are not congruent with that federal regulation is strictly manual and changed. It is located within our volunteer policy because, like, twinkles that comes and hangs out with us sometimes and other support animals that we have, we have the regulations that are congruent with current federal guidelines.
I'm really glad to see these changes. I was concerned in 2015, it felt a little dry community to me, and this one it's much more in line with our thinking and our practices and in line with the remarkable assistance that animals can provide to our students and our program.
Well, I've got chicken cooked today.
Great, thank you so much.
Yep.
Moving on to 10.3, first reading, policy 5310, health services. Welcome to.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Mr. Hershizer, and Ms. Marshall. You will see for your review, policy 5310, health services. And essentially, this revision is just bringing state law up to date as it relates to concussions, head injuries that occur during some school activity, as well as policies in place to and conditions to return to that school activity. Happy to answer your questions.
Hearing none, thank you so much. 10.4, first reading, policy 5460, graduation requirements. Welcome.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Mr. Hershizer, Ms. Marshall. This latest update for the graduation requirements recognizes the previous new requirements that began with the class of 2023, and the previous requirements for other classes have been phased out. And additionally, students beginning in class of 2026, where current sophomores are now required to earn a half credit of financial literacy. And that is, of course, that the board approved in December. So, this is just updating that language on the graduation requirements to meet the state requirements. Happy to answer your questions, ma'am.
Hearing none, thank you so much. 10.5, first reading, policy 8200, continuance of organizational operations plans. Mr. Moore?
Good evening, President Davidson, Vice President Meyer. Members of the board, Mr. Hershizer, Ms. Marshall, presented here are minor alterations to policy 8300, continuity of organizational operations plan. This policy update now includes cyber attacks as one of the items on our list of threats to be prepared for in terms of maintaining our operations. Recommended that the board adopt these minor alterations as presented.
Any questions? I do have a question, may I have a question like that? But I'm just curious how we're preparing for cyber. There's lots of I see, I love to generate these. That's why I say, Mr. Moore.
So, you know, the short answer is, you know, a lot of school districts are trying to figure out how to prepare for this. Our insurance company last year gave us a ton of items, recommendations, so to speak, checkboxes, so that we could actually be insured. So, we've started many, many of those kinds of things. Just, you know, multi-factor authentication, just different things like that.
Great, thank you. 10.6, first reading for 9160, public attendance at school dance.
Again, presented here are minor alterations to policy 9160. This policy update is more inclusive of defined prohibited items, particularly in the definition of the use of tobacco. It also correctly names the responsible district administrator with regard to this policy. So, it is recommended that the board adopt these minor alterations as presented.
Any questions? Hearing none, thank you so much. Recommended actions to unit business, 11.1, authorization of participation in the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Advocacy of School Funding, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Yes, thank you, President, thank you to members of the board. So, this will continue our participation in the school voucher lawsuit. This is what the state officer sent the survey about, whether the board approved our participation at our general basis. This will also confirm the ownership in the Ohio Coalition for Equity and Advocacy, which we have a long stated condition of supporting. To board which applies in flight.
Any other questions or comments? I just want to second that, how board is continuing to move on. We just want to say, thanks, my fellow board members. But pass the board, I won't be disappointed about that.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 11.2, resolution to approve bus routes, stop locations, darkest years, running home. So, may I have a motion?
So moved. So moved.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Ms. Marshall, and Mr. Hershizer. Ohio Administrative Code 3301-8313 requires daily overlaying for district board approval of all bus and van stops in time schedules. This requirement must be accomplished within the first 10 days of the start of school. The state of Ohio requires transportation for kindergarten through eighth-grade students who reside more than two miles from their own school. In compliance with this administrative code, we are asking for your approval of the fully staffed bus and my van routes and stop locations for the 23-24 school year.
I just want to say, whoever puts this together could have. I would have strings everywhere trying to figure out how 99 bus routes, all those students, that's amazing.
We have a rock star transportation team. And the people that lead this, the people that drive our buses and my vans, we have a rock star team, and the mechanics will keep them running.
Yes. Thank you. Yep. I just want to thank everybody who's gotten us this fully staffed garage cab. Really exciting, and welcome to all the drivers and those in the training. Yeah, so just really excited to start and not be slow with you.
Awesome, thanks, ma'am.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yeah.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 11.3, overlaying other state features, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Welcome back, Mr. Moore.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Mr. Hershizer, and Ms. Marshall. We have a request for one trip, this is for the Westerville North Girls Cross Country Team. And this is for a team building retreat this weekend coming up at the Heartland Retreat Center in Marengo. So, they'll go there and they'll do some team building, setting goals, and run. So, happy to answer your questions, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
We do not have any other comments this evening, which takes us to more comments. Would you like to go first?
I can. I would just, I'll keep mine brief. Want to, first of all, welcome Dr. Clark to the Westerville City School District. Looking forward to working with you and looking forward to great things. I'd also like to welcome back all of the staff and tomorrow, all of your students. Looking forward to a great, productive, learning, safe school year ahead. Thank you to all of our retirees for all of your many years of faithful service and dedicated service here to the Westerville City School District and all of the students and families.
I also want to thank Dr. Clark for being here tonight. I'm really excited to work with you and really excited about this next chapter. I also want to thank Mr. Hershizer for staying around and supporting. I think that's really important. A big thanks to facilities team, that's a big huge friend, and everybody for getting us here. I had such a great time. I got to go to have a breakfast and see everybody over last week. I did this one in my apologies to food service because I was at a meeting. But everybody seemed really excited, and it was amazing to be with everybody and see that excitement. And then, I just wanted to say to the students and the staff, have a great year.
Well, they've already said it, but...
Well, thank you for being here. And just know how incredibly much work has gone on. We call it different areas, transportation, facilities, all of our local teachers and staff. But everybody in their own way has just always kitchen and come together. And I know that we ask too much sometimes, and thank you for all that you give. It's just so appreciated. I want to apologize that I was out of town last week, so I missed the breakfast, and I feel like I just missed a lot of opportunity to connect. So, hoping to find some other chances to do that in the next month or so. And Mr. Hershizer, Christie said it, but thank you. I know that the smooth start that we will have tomorrow is thanks to so many people. There's also thanks to you and, you know, making all those pieces fit together. So, really appreciate you sticking with us.
Well, Dr. Clark, you know what I'm going to say, though? It is a delight to have you here, and I invite my wife, Amanda Lynn. She's going to be here too. I'm really enjoying being on top of her as well as talking about you. And I am very much looking forward to seeing your dog. I'm seeing your dog making rounds, and since we had that policy on tonight, I figured you'd be around. Also, as I think about next year, you need to buy a lot of popsicles because we have a lot of kids in band again. Dr. Clark is known for taking popsicles to the kids when they are out marching in the heat and band. I'm going to watch next year. I'm already calling my granddaughter, you're shutting off the popsicles. It's going to be good. But thank you for being here. I'm really looking forward to the impact forming on Westerville. And I'm looking forward to the impact Westerville will make on you. It's going to be one of the best. I also want to thank everyone in the Mark Board that has been accomplished, well, over months, but especially in these last several days and these... It's been very difficult for many of our teachers as they have struggled with getting into their rooms and being able to prepare. I know it's been hard. I thank them for their commitment to the district, their commitment to the kids starting in those classrooms tomorrow, and I hope they don't have to go through this again. But our people are wonderful. I want to second what our Hershizer said about the city. That partnership is beyond compare, and they did everything by the book. They did everything that needed to be done, and they did it well, and they did it in ways that they never had to do. And I just want to say thank you to Monica Ireland, to Jason Vecchione, to Edumber, to all of the people on the teams that helped make tomorrow ready to soar. So, welcome back, everyone. Welcome, Dr. Clark, and let's go.
It's always hard on the rest. So, I'll start out with Dr. Clark, so I'm super excited to hear everything. We can't wait for you to start. So, I want to let everyone know that Joe's first public day will be October 1st. Until then, Mark will still guide us. In the meantime, Dr. Clark will be here for several different occasions. So, we'll let him know what that will be after he comes on board. Mark is actually going to be advisor to the board, special advisor to the board. So, he's really not going anywhere. We keep trying to let it inch away, but then we bring it back. So, we'll have him around until about January 1st, right? So, we'll have him around until January first, right? And we're excited about that. Thank you so much to the city. Everyone said it really well. We truly appreciate that partnership and that continued partnership, because we're really not done, even though we're opening our buildings tomorrow. People are still working around the clock, and we're very, very grateful for that. And then, just, you know, I wish everyone a great school year to our students and our staff. I'm super excited about this, too. It feels really good this time, so, exciting. And with that, the board will meet in regular session on Monday, August twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at six p.m. here at Riverdale Morning Center. And may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is that good?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
This is Omen?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
This is Meyer?
Yes.
This is Davis?
Yes. And with that, we're adjourned.